All right. Okay, so now that we have begun the recording, I'm going to welcome everyone. Good afternoon. This is the briefing portion of the Planning Commission meeting for May 3rd, 2022. I'm going to start with an access check for our commissioners and I'm going to do a roll. All right. And I'm going to start with a roll call on attendance. Commissioner Askey.
Here.
Commissioner Blackwell. Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Burton Falk here. Commissioner Dietrich. Commissioner Dick.
Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Mango. Commissioner Chair Mandor. And Commissioner O'Neill.
Here.
Fantastic. Well, welcome again. This is the briefing session for the Planning Commission. Briefing means that the cases are heard as preliminary public presentation for initial questions from the commission. Public testimony is not taken at this time. A reminder to the presenters, clearly describe which slide you are presenting to assist those presenting via or participating via audio. Today on the agenda for briefing, we have one item, Agenda Item A. And that is DCP-ZDR-2020-01078 at 3300 Prebo Avenue. That is new construction of Alkasan CSO disinfectant building. And that is in the Marshall Shadland neighborhood. And presenting that for us here today will be Mr. Kunitz.
Thank you, Commissioners. I will just take a moment to admit our speakers as panelists. And to try a sound check. Hello, Joel. Can we do a sound check real quick before I start my report?
Yep, can you hear me okay?
We can. Thank you.
Okay. Check with Rulison as well.
Hi, all. This is Rulison.
Yeah, great. So I will start with my report. I'll then turn it over to the both of you to give your presentation and I'll share my screen. So just let me know when to advance the next slide.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is an application for project development plan, DCP-ZDR-2022-00182 for the demolition of existing structures and new construction of approximately 2,700 gross square foot, 37-foot-tall building for utility general use in the RIV-GI General Industrial Subdistrict. The proposed building is a combined sewer overflow CSO bypass disinfection chemical building that will contain disinfection systems for wet weather flow bypass events. A virtual development activities meeting with the Brightwood Civic Group was held on April 5th, 2022. A copy of that DAM report is attached to your briefing report. Staff reviewed the proposed design, a staff design review on March 7th, 2022, reviewed by the contextual design advisory panel. CEDAP was not recommended. The applicant worked with staff to address comments and staff has no outstanding comments or concerns. There are no requests to the zoning board of adjustment as part of this project. The project's floodplain application has been approved by staff. The development is interior to Alkasan's existing wastewater treatment facility. So no dummy review was required as there is no new transportation impacts on the public realm. And with that, I will turn it over to our applicants.
There we go. Well, thank you, Kevin. That was an excellent introduction and I'm afraid most of my presentation will be a little bit redundant because you covered it pretty well. My name's Rulison Evans. I'm with the engineering firm of GHD and we are the final design consultant for Alkasan on this project, which is known as the combined sewer overflow and combined sewer overflow bypass and disinfection project. Kevin, you can advance the slide. Again, I'm Rulison Evans. I'm down there at the bottom of this slide. My colleague Joel Kostalak is also on the Zoom call with us. And I suspect that the folks listed here from Alkasan are joining in and watching us on the YouTube parallel video. So. Thanks, Kevin. A quick description of the project. This is indeed one of several ongoing and future projects at the Alkasan Treatment Plant, known as the Woods Run Wastewater Treatment Plant. Collectively, these projects will give Alkasan the capability eventually here of treating up to 600 million gallons per day. And by doing so, that will reduce the frequency and duration and volume of overflows to the rivers and streams in the in the region. And the one aspect of the project that we're here to talk about today that is applicable here for most of the permitting activities that we're undertaking is the new chemical building. Most of the other work, what I mean by that is most of the other work associated with the project is underground piping, valves, faults, and things like that that you wouldn't see. So we'll talk about the built the chemical building mostly today. Kevin, next slide. For those that might be familiar with the Alkasan Treatment Plant site, for example, maybe you were there for their open houses over the years. Maybe you recognize this, but in any event, the Ohio River flowing from left to right at the top of the page. And the Alkasan, a big part of Alkasan's process, structures are shown on this slide. And the new building that we're applying for here is the proposed chemical building you see in red. It's roughly 40 by 60 by 40 feet high. And by the way, also on this slide, the darker colored items that you see kind of up and down the page and across left to right, just underneath the chemical building are where some of those underground structures are being being built. But the again, the red building is the only thing above grade that anyone would see. Kevin, next. Development activity, the existing use for the area where this new building is going to be built. There are a couple of old metal buildings that Alkasan uses primarily for storage. Those buildings will be removed to make way for our new chemical storage and handling building. Kevin already mentioned, most of the context here, we're in the Marshall Shadland neighborhood. But again, entirely within the fenced-in area of the Alkasan Treatment Plant, not accessible to the general public. We did review this meet this project with the Brightwood Civic Group at a development activities meeting that was held on April 5th. At that meeting, at least, we did not hear any significant objections or any objections. We did get some great questions, but we had no objections during that meeting. Again, riverfront general industrial zoning district. And due to the nature of Alkasan's mission, this is certainly a water-dependent use that is dependent on being, meaning that it's dependent on being adjacent to the river where you saw it on the site plan. Regulatory review status, the design reviews complete. Kevin mentioned earlier, the floodplain is floodplain impact has been approved. Zoning application number you see on the screen. We have submitted for building permit application. And we have requested concurrent review with zoning for that building permit application. And at the moment, we're not expecting to have to request any variances. Kevin? Just for perspective, on the left, you can see the existing metal buildings that are in place right now at the site. And on the right, through the magic of computers and architects, we remove those buildings and show you what the new chemical building will look like when it's constructed. Next slide, Kevin. And just in case you're floating down the Ohio River and wonder what it might look like from there, you can see the same thing on the left, the existing metal buildings. And on the right, the new building as it will look. Kevin? For the architects out there, here's a couple elevation views from one from the side of the building and one from the front. Again, the dimensions are there. So it's a it's a rather significant structure of about 2,500 square feet. And it is close to 40 feet high. The reason it's that tall is that the the chemical tanks are inside of this building. And on the left-hand view there, if the wall were removed, you'd see the chemical tanks that are, you know, pretty much filling up that space inside the building. Kevin? Again, for for the architects out there, the isometric views of the same building from a couple different angles. And we were asked to provide a construction management plan, just to give an idea of, you know, the impacts that will occur during construction. But once again, you know, this is entirely within the fenced-in area at the Alkasan Plant. So it will be a challenge and a, you know, somewhat of an inconvenience to the staff operating the plant during construction, but will not have any impacts on the general public because it's all inside the plant. Kevin, next. From a sustainability and stormwater management standpoint, we have incorporated several features to the building. A cool roof is one example that will help reduce energy usage. Daylight harvesting, you might have noticed on the isometric views that we have skylights above the tanks that allow some natural light into the building. The lighting that we do need inside and outside the building is all LED and controlled, you know, with automatic controls. Stormwater wise, we're not creating any new impervious surfaces because the building's replacing a couple existing buildings. And even driveway and pavement, driveway and parking areas for the new structures are no different than than already exists for the existing structures. And just a point of interest that the this project has already achieved stormwater management plan approval back in 2018 from the city as well as the county conservation district. So. Next. Again, accessibility, this this is really showing how the the construction activity will occur and not really anything to do with general public access. But we thought we ought to provide an accessibility slide here for you to visualize how this is going to get built. The main X main entrance to the plant site for any visitors or vendors or anyone else is at the bottom left corner of the screen. And that's also how most of the construction traffic would enter. And then the exit would be at the back of, I guess that's Tracy up at the top left of the screen. Kevin, next. Community process summary, you know, again, we've submitted for zoning development review. The the development activities meeting has already been completed back in April 5th. The building permit application's been submitted. And here we are today for the planning commission briefing. And we hope to visit with you again on May 17th for the hearing and again, hopefully a favorable approval action. And I believe that's all I have.
Well, thank you for the presentation. And since that concludes, I'll remind everyone that at this time, there is no public testimony, but questions, comments and concerns from commissioners. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
I have one.
Commissioner O'Neill, or I'm sorry, Commissioner O'Neill, and then I'll get to you, Commissioner Dick.
Sure. I'm looking at the view from the river, showing the existing metal building and the proposed building. If we could pull up that slide, please. I think it's the best to see the building. Thank you. So I looked at the elevation drawings and from here it's a little bit hard to see, but the primary material is going to be brick. Is that correct?
Block and brick, yes, or combination thereof. The the striping that you see is just a different shade and a different orientation of the of the block. Okay, I think block is probably the better, better word than brick. It's not, not your traditional old red brick that you might see in a street, but architectural block.
Okay, if we could see next time, a little bit more detail about what those materials will look like, that would be appreciated, just so we can understand the texture and the color and which portions are block and which portions are slightly different.
Okay, certainly.
I guess as a follow-up question, it does seem like a flat facade along the river. And I'll let my architect colleagues comment on that more. Is there any kind of additional visual interest? Is it one facade? Or is there some portion step back even just kind of a little bit?
Well, I think what you see in the in the view here is kind of what you what you get as far as the way the way the design is at the moment. You know, th- this is an industrial facility, the Alkasan Plant. And, you know, I think that their interest is to keep the cost, you know, reasonably on the low side as, you know, as much as possible. You know, it is, it's certainly possible that some additional features or textures or or designs could be incorporated into that, that rather large facade that you refer to. So I certainly understand where your your comment is coming from.
Yeah, I I think, and I understand it is an industrial building. That's why there are no windows on it. We understand that there are certainly limitations regarding the use. This is facing a river. And, you know, we are trying to encourage more use of our rivers and the views therefrom to be a little more thoughtful. So if you could just, when you come back, describe kind of how how you're addressing the riverfront view. If there could be more visual interest or, you know, a closer up view that shows what this will look like, that that would be appreciated.
Understood. Will do.
Thank you. I don't have any further comments.
Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neill. Commissioner Dick, you had a question?
Okay, I have a follow-up to your question. Is there any chance of putting the plantings on that riverside facet of the building to add a little more interest to it?
I'm sorry, adding adding what to the?
Planting.
Oh, plantings, plantings, landscaping.
Yeah, just simple stop to sort of enhance the view a bit from the river.
Well, I can't make any commitments to you today, but I certainly can, we can certainly take a look at that. And, you know, if there's a possibility of doing something, we can, we can share that with you when we visit you next time. I will say that there's not a whole lot of space between the building and the river wall that you see there, but doesn't mean that we can't do anything. We'll take a look at it.
Okay. And my other question, which is not absolutely pertinent to what that which upon which we are voting. But what is the under underground storage capacity of this, since it is somewhat of an overflow facility? Is there any significant underground storage capacity here?
Well, not as a, not as a part of this particular project. There are other projects ongoing at the plant that are increasing the process, the unit process capacities at the plant. That's a, that's a question that's, I'm afraid I wouldn't be able to answer for you today. It, this is, but this is not a combined sewer overflow storage project. This is a treatment project. The flows are going to pass directly through the plant. They're going to come in, be pumped in a new pump station through part of the process and be discharged directly to the river without detaining that wastewater at the plant site for any significant amount of time.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Dick. If that concludes your questions, it looks like Commissioner Dietrich has has questions as well.
Hi, thanks for the presentation. I'm going to be less charitable than my commissioner, fellow commissioners, O'Neill and Dick. I don't know. I want to ask also our planning staff how this fits into the RIV. I mean, the design is not what our rezoning of riverfront buildings was intended to look like. I don't know what other alternatives you considered in this process. I realize you're saving money and it looks like you're saving money. That's exactly the kind of building we get when we don't enforce our design standards on the river and what buildings look like from the river. So first, and also Riverlife Task Force, they are usually a partner in these kind of designs. I don't know what your involvement has been with them and what kind of comments they had on it too.
Well, I'm honestly not aware of the fact that we've received any kind of input from Riverfront Task Force. But certainly understand where you're where you're coming from. You know, again, my my comment, I guess, would be the industrial nature of a wastewater treatment plant and the fact that the new structure, you know, in, I guess, in our opinion, it is at least as visually attractive as the old metal buildings that you see on the left. I don't, I don't want to make light of, you know, my response to your comment is certainly well received. And you know, if we can enhance the 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 appearance through some manipulation of the brick and block materials that we're using and perhaps a few plantings, that that that's something that I could, I could discuss with our client, Alkasan.
Yeah, I mean, obviously Riverlife wasn't around when your first building was there. So that's not part of the discussion. And we didn't have a RIV. I mean, so I'd also like the staff to comment if Riverlife should be involved in this project in some way. If there should be some kind of involvement from you and from Alkasan in working and discussing at least a presentation to that community partner whose importance on riverfront buildings is so important to all of us and the staff to answer my question about the RIV.
Sure, I mean, to your question regarding the RIV, so this is in the RIV-GI. And the RIV, in the RIV District Design Standards, there's maybe three applicable boxes. There's two under roof design and one for curb cuts. So we ask applicants to submit a narrative of how their design meets the design standards within the RIV. And again, since this is within the RIV-GI, how does it meet the reef standards and then the curb cut standards? And it meets, you know, they supplied a narrative of how it meets the reef standards and the curb cut standards.
Okay, thanks, Kevin. And how about the involvement of Riverlife? I mean, it's not an RCO, but we generally have them come in on any kind of riverfront projects like this, particularly of such a magnitude.
I may defer to my other planning colleagues on that one. But again, as you mentioned, they, we had a development activities meeting with the RCO. And currently, Riverlife is not an RCO. So we do encourage applicants to reach out to applicable partners. But, you know, as you mentioned, Riverlife is not a registered community organization. So while we can encourage applicants to reach out to community partners, there's no specific requirement in the code for them to do so.
I know. I think as a commission, though, we always do like to see some involvement of Riverlife in any of these. I'd like Alkasan to consider that and to consider a design that's much more respective of our waterfronts and what that view is from what they already have. We understand it's an industrial building. Our riverfronts were filled with industrial buildings. We understand all that, but that indeed is why Riverlife came into being and what that transformation can look like. I hope we can see a much improved visualization of this project at some point.
Thank you, Commissioner Dietrich. Does that conclude your comments?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Are there any other commissioners that would like to speak at this time? All right, so hearing none, I I think that Mr. Evans, you have some things that the commission would like to see when you come back, reaching out to Riverlife, communicating and sharing with them. And then maybe coming up with some landscaping and maybe some something else as it relates to the building. So we appreciate the presentation and we look forward to seeing you back in two weeks.
Well, thank you for the opportunity. We'll be back.
Thank you very much. Okay, so Commissioners, it looks like we are, we are ending the briefing portion of today's meeting. I think that we can return back at, let's say, 2:15. Would that be fair? All right. Well, so then we'll see everyone at 2:15 to begin the hearing and action portion of our agenda for today. Thank you. See you soon.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so, uh, this is the hearing and action portion of the Planning Commission meeting for May 3, 2022. I'd like to welcome everyone. This is the hearing and action portion of the Planning Commission meeting. Hearing means that cases are presented for action by the Planning Commission. During the hearing portion of the Planning Commission meeting, we will take public testimony with instructions to be given after each item is heard. Welcome to our applicant presenters. A reminder to clearly describe which slide you are presenting to assist those participating via audio. I am going to now do a roll call of commissioners just to, uh, verify attendance, and that is Commissioner Askey. Thank you. Commissioner Blackwell.
Here.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Brown.
Present.
Commissioner Burton Falk, present. Uh, Commissioner Dietrich.
Here.
Commissioner Dick.
Here.
Commissioner Mango. And Chair Mondor isn't here, uh, and Commissioner O'Neill.
Here.
Thank you, uh, commissioners for being here today. I am going to read through our agenda for today. First agenda item is A, Approval of Commission Minutes. Agenda item B is Correspondence. Agenda item C, Hearing and Action. Under Hearing and Action, we will hear, um, two items. That'll be item DCP-HN-2021-00821 at 1800 Lay Street. Item two is DCP-ZDR-2019-08238 at 5546 Baum Boulevard. Under, um, item D, we have Plan of Lots. I won't go through all of those at this time. I'll wait until we get to Plan of Lots. And under Agenda Item E, we have a Director's Report. So, moving back up, uh, to Agenda Item A, I will, uh, share with commissioners, uh, that the meeting minutes went out. There were some corrections. Uh, staff made those corrections, but commissioners have not reviewed them again after the edits. So we will hold those for the next Planning Commission meeting. Thank you for that. Um, and thank you to the staff. We are now at Agenda Item B, which is Correspondence. Correspondence for May 3, 2022 are the following. For Agenda Item DCP-ZDR-2021-12140 at 525 South Aiken Avenue, we have something from Sean Heron. For Item DCP-ZDR-2021-05131 05218 05219, Duffield Street, we have correspondence from Jerry Pampa. We also have, uh, Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh Main Branch, Shenley Plaza, Entrance Edition and Renovations. Something, uh, in terms of correspondence from Wanda E. Wilson on behalf of Oakland Planning and Development Corporation. We also have an article, uh, from Allegheny County, uh, from Alex Paragaski. Uh, we have something, uh, related to the Oakland Plan Rezoning, and that would be from Brendan Lucas. Okay, uh, now we move on to Agenda Item C, that is Hearing and Action. We are going to cover Agenda Item Number One. Uh, that is DCP-HN-2021-00821 at 1800 Lay Street. Presenting that, uh, will be Ms. Quinn. It's a historic nomination for the Troy Hill Firehouse in the Troy Hill neighborhood. Ms. Quinn?
Thank you, commissioners. Um, and if you could put the photos up, please, that would be great. As mentioned earlier, this property is located at 1800 Lay Street. Um, it's owned by the city and has been nominated by Matthew Falcone on behalf of Preservation Pittsburgh. The Troy Hill Firehouse is a two-story brick structure, formerly a firehouse and now used for civil service, constructed in the Bozart style with Romanesque influences. The Troy Hill Firehouse is a two-story brick structure, formerly a firehouse and now used for civil service, constructed in the Beaux-Arts style with Romanesque influences. It's a fine example of civic Beaux-Arts style architecture done in a vernacular localized interpretation. The decorative brickwork in particular continues up the central column of the facade, acting as a squared, almost Italian-esque tower suggestive of a bell tower. A deep-set cornice visually marks the second-story roofline and parapet on the facade. And if you could scroll forward, please. Thank you. The eighteen ninety Allegheny City Hopkins map is the first to label a brick building located at the corner of Forest and Branch Streets, which are now Roman and Lay Streets as engine house number eleven. This building was demolished to make way for this larger structure in the late eighteen nineties. It was, let me see. So it was at this time that the residents of Troy Hill felt that they needed to provide an expanded fire station to provide increased city services for the many German-speaking immigrants that began to flock to the area. By nineteen hundred, the neighborhood had its own trolley run in Kind plain and reached its peak of population of ten thousand inhabitants. The Historic Review Commission felt that this building was significant of an architectural type style or design distinguished by innovation rarity or uniqueness. The character elements of the Beaux-Arts exemplify the structure included. It's used of decorative terracotta elements, notably around the windows as cornice bands. The consistent theme of arched brick fenestration and doorways. The use of localized white-blawn brick common to Pittsburgh and particularly the north side. And the square central tower exhibits the late influence of the Italianate style. Excuse me. The Historic Review Commission also felt this property was significant as the identification of the work of an architect, designer, or builder who is significant to Pittsburgh. Joseph Stillberg was once a prolific architect in Pittsburgh, having designed both major commissions such as the exposition buildings, as well as many minor commissions, particularly in his home of the north side, with notable extant examples being the Everhart Ober Brewery in addition to this current resource. He was well-known both for the quality of his craft as well for being the mentor of a notable Pittsburgh architect Frederick Osterling. As one of only a handful of Stillberg's works excuse me, as one of only a handful of Stillberg's work to retain integrity and remain extant, this resource retains its significance for its association with him. The Historic Review Commission also felt that this property was significant as representation of a cultural, historic or related theme expressed through distinctive areas, properties, or sites. With its central location, central intersection, and the otherwise remote neighborhood, it's rare to see a photo of a parade or gathering in Troy Hill that does not feature this resource. And if you could go forward to, I believe. Yeah, the postcard with the picture of the building on it. It was a key part of the neighborhood's settlement and an important factor in its identity. And for those of you that haven't been up to Troy Hill, you know, they don't have like a public square as many of the other neighborhoods have. They have more of a triangle, and this building is located at one side of that. So it's it's part of many, many, many photographs from folks participating in events in the neighborhood. And also, I would like to mention as a non-contiguous resource associated with our other fire stations in the city, this represents a set of fire-related public buildings that I think are definitely an asset to the city. And I just wanted to mention that the city is doing nominations for many of these buildings because I think it's anticipated that once the VA facility over on Woodland Road in Laramo is up and operating, many of these buildings will be sold off to the public, so they wanted to have protection in place for the resources. Let me see. The property maintains a high degree of integrity in spite of the fact that it's missing its little cupola at the top. And if you could go back to the second photograph, please? Thank you. Yeah, you've noticed that that's missing. So that may be something that the city or the the neighborhood could potentially receive a grant to reproduce or do fundraisers or something like that. But in spite of the fact that this is missing, clearly, we can tell what the building was, what it was used for. And it appears that most of the alterations are going to, will be easily reversible should the city or a future unknown owner choose to do a restoration. So the Historic Review Commission voted to provide a positive recommendation to city council, and I recommend that you all do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Quinn, for the presentation. At this time, we now take public testimony. So if there is public testimony, we ask that you please raise your hand if you would like to speak regarding this item. If you were on the phone, we do have someone?
Oh, I was gonna say there are no hands raised.
Okay, fantastic. Well, then, given there are no hands raised, commissioners, would anyone like to comment or have anything to say? Questions for Ms. Quinn at this time? Hearing seeing none. Commissioner Dick, were you raising your hand? You're on mute. If you were raising your hand.
I'm sorry, I was going to move that we pass the motion for the historical status, give historical status to this building.
Oh, fantastic. So we'll make a recommendation to council. We've got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. I'll go through Commissioner Askey.
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Burton Falk, aye. Commissioner Dietrich.
Aye.
Commissioner Dick.
Aye.
Commissioner Mingo. Commissioner Chair Mondor is not here, and Commissioner O'Neill.
Aye.
Fantastic. Well, the motion carries to make a positive recommendation to council. Thank you, Ms. Quinn.
Thank you, everyone.
You're welcome. Have a very good day. All right, under hearing and action, agenda item number two. DCP-ZDR-2019-08238 at fifty-five forty-six Baum Boulevard. A new construction of a seven and nine-story residential structure in the Friendship Neighborhood. Presenting that today is Ms. Racus.
Thank you, commissioners. Good afternoon. If I can just do a quick audio check with at least the folks with Bill Sittick, make sure we can hear you. And then I'll do my brief introduction and turn it over to you to make the presentation.
Good afternoon, Kate. This is Bill.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. So, thank you. Good afternoon again. This is an application for new seven and nine-story residential structure. It's the second phase of building known as Baum House. This is before you because it's in the Baum Center overlay. It's in the Friendship Neighborhood, but it's not within a registered community organization area. And it's also not within the inclusionary housing zoning overlay that was expanded at council just this past week, expanded through council just this past week and signed by the mayor. Several years back, the project requested and was granted relief from the zoning board, two special exceptions for height and relation to adjacent residential, and two variances related to height and the other variance related to floor area ratio. So parking is provided on the project. DOMI has approved their transportation impact study, and they are working on reviewing the site plan together with the curb cuts. The stormwater management plan is under review by staff. The project went through staff designer view and then the contextual design advisory panel on November second of twenty twenty-one. And since then, the applicant has worked to address seat apps comments. I knew you have the seat app summary letter together in your packet. So staff is making a positive recommendation on this with our standard condition that we review with all the final drawings prior to issuance of the record of zoning approval. With that, I'll turn it over to the applicants to make their presentation.
Thanks, Kate. Good afternoon, commissioners. Very pleased to be bringing this project back to the planning commission and at this public hearing, as Kate mentioned, it's the second phase of project, so it's been many, many years in the work. They were designed as multi-phase projects from the beginning. Phase one was really, has been successful on multiple levels, not just as a commercial success, but it's been an architectural success. It's won awards. It's also, most importantly, been, by all accounts, a positive amenity asset to the community and especially inclusivity in the community. So we're looking to build on that and bring the full vision to fruition. The, as Kate mentioned, it was before the zoning board. And we frankly expected to be here a while ago, but because of the pandemic, it's been delayed. A lot of the world has changed, but we were at the zoning board in February of twenty twenty. But the community process obviously was robust all through, starting well in advance of phase one and has continued, I believe, really continuously throughout through the development of phase one, through the occupancy, construction occupancy of phase one, and rolled right through phase two. With me today is Mike Gornick. He's the founder, principal, owner of Laurel Real Estate. And Jeremiah Brooks is here. He's the architect for the project. They're with me. And then on separate links is Joe Galbreth from Gateway. And Joe particularly can provide the details on the stormwater management. And City Jampol is also here to discuss the transportation impacts. The project pursuant to the submission that we made complies with the PDP criteria except in one aspect, and that's the retail the ground floor tenant space. As we mentioned at the briefing, that tenant space, that ground floor space, in contrast to phase one, that space is going to be, is proposed to be occupied as residential units, open to the street. And with space, as we'll see, and as we mentioned previously, and Jeremiah will describe, consistent with phase one and interfacing with the public at the street level. But as Mike will describe, the experience with phase one, which has only been exacerbated with the economy, is that it's just not feasible. So that space has been designed as per phase one. That it has the floor to ceiling. It has the openings to the street at street level that it could be commercial. But practically, it's not going to be. This project is going to be proceeding as residential. There's always an opportunity, especially as a retrofit. It's designed that it could become that, but we believe that while the language in that provision gives you latitude to do that flat out, it's going to be residential, not commercial space. So with that, we know the commission has, to the community, a number of comments about the ground floor treatment and the design. And we took that to heart, as you'll see in Jeremiah present. You know, hopefully, we've been able to describe that in better detail and detail it in a manner that is more consistent with what's expected at that street level. We also took into account the other comments that were made by the commission and by the community generally. And hopefully, we'll hit those as we go. But I'd like to start off with Mike Gornick and give you the background on the project and as it relates to phase one.
Thanks, Bill, and thank you, commissioners and staff, for your time today. Yeah, just, you know, we're building off the success of our phase one project, as Bill mentioned, you know, winner of architectural awards through AIA. You know, and also importantly, you know, winning some operational awards for our community best-in-living awards as well. So another good thing is
I'm sorry to interrupt, but sir, could you spell your name for me? This is the court reporter.
Yes, sir. It's Michael Gornick, G-O-R-N-I-C-K.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sittick, if you could ask your witnesses to spell their last names for me.
I know better. My apology.
It's okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, so, you know, and more importantly, I think our engagement with our with our community, we have a, you know, a really diverse group of residents in our building that are very community-minded and engaging, you know, generally as a whole. And so we've been really thrilled to partner with Friendship Community Group in particular, in a lot of ways that, you know, we keep that as an open door for continued, you know, participation from our residents within the greater immediate community and hopefully beyond. So as far as the design goes, been really happy again to be using the same team from our phase one development, building off that success with workshop and Stan Tech locally, and then having the support of Bill Sittick. And really being sponsored here by Baum Center Initiative from the community side, as well as participation from Friendship Community Group. You know, one of the really important parts for me was that, you know, we build on the successes, but we learn from some of the mistakes on phase one. And I think we could have had better communication with the community on phase one, so we deliberately went out and engaged. You know, especially the residences and businesses we shared Dapper Way with, which is our service alley right behind the building. And we developed a community agreement that was spearheaded by myself, the Center Villa condominiums, which we share the service alley with, and Friendship Community Group. And so we've recorded and put on record that agreement, which is going to keep access to Dapper Way through the construction of the project. So I'm really proud of our team collectively of coming up with creative solutions to work around that. As Bill mentioned, you know, the other lesson learned is that the first-floor retail was not entirely viable and wasn't received the way we thought it would be on phase one. We had a commitment to the community that we would keep that retail, and we did that. Fortunately, we were able to secure a first-floor retail tenant after well over two and a half years of having vacant space at that street level. And so, you know, I really wanted to have an impact at street level immediately. And I think that having introducing the residences at that street level will help maintain activity and engagement at street level rather than, you know, prolonged vacancy. And, you know, kind of break up the monolith, which might be kind of, you know, a retail monolith across Baum. I think this diversity of activity really helps as well in the design. So really appreciate your time, and I'll pass off to Jeremiah to help us walk through our plan here.
All right. Thank you. Thank you all. Jeremiah, J-E-R-E-M-I-A-H-B-R-O-O-K-S. Thank you for the time today to review the project. I guess we'll kind of start through the slides. Slide two is a contextual map, just showing the red square there that is planned east of phase one along Baum Boulevard, South Graham and Dapper Way. Slide three, please. This goes on to highlight some of what Mike had just stated, outreach to community, engagement with the surrounding neighbors. Some of the awards that phase one has gotten notoriety for. And we want to build off that. As you'll see in the following slides, that this is intended to be a companion building, not necessarily a copy. Um, we wanted to make sure that there be prolonged interest along the uh block and not uh just redundancy. Next slide, please. So on slide four, this was just a contextual uh heights. Um, as a follow up to uh our zoning variances, uh we do have two towers as opposed to the single block building in phase one. Um, and the goal on this was that along Bond Boulevard itself, we would use a uh a seven story tower that would match the height of a long bomb boulevard and match the setback of phase one. And then allowing us to do a a nine story tower on the back uh with the increase that they are um to to make the project project work. Next slide five. Uh, it's just an axon uh showing the, you know, the heights limitations of of phase two comparison to phase one and also some of the surrounding buildings. So uh we are topping out the top uh parapet of the nine story tower uh at a hundred foot eight, uh which is slightly taller than phase uh one um, but not by any means the tallest building within the immediate vicinity. Uh, next slide. On slide six, this shows the overall site plan with power tie phase one to phase two and access eleven Dapper Way. Um, we are uh proposing a private drive, a right in only um one way drive between the buildings for access to the building and back to Dapper Way. Uh, the garage on below phase two will be accessed through the garage entrance in phase one. So we're trying to capitalize on uh some of those improvements that were made with phase one and reduce kind of the infrastructure uh that would be required for phase two. Um, along bomb, you see that we do continue to do a deep setback for for the bulk of the building. And that's going to allow us for, uh as Mike had mentioned, um three or I'm sorry, residences along uh grade. And we've got a got a a site wall to accommodate the the grade change uh between Bond Boulevard and uh those red walkout terraces. Um, we are providing us uh a small knee wall uh to accommodate that grade, but also kind of divide uh between public and private um in that area. Uh, we are providing uh some deep recesses to uh provide some relief along bomb boulevard sidewalk with some public amenities such as uh, you know, plantings, benches, uh, you know, bike racks and accommodations similar to phase one. Uh, phase one, we did outboard um plantings to bring the sidewalk in border of the property line. Uh, on phase two, we're actually going back to a traditional sidewalk with street trees and um having that same with a planting though, just on a private property uh within the property line. Um, the next slide. Uh, seven, um, this starts to kind of indicate where uh our our landscape is or the materials for our landscape. Uh, again, we're we're going off of what was successful in phase one, selecting materials that are um you know, local and and um don't have high uh uh irrigation requirements or anything of that nature, uh using them to mitigate some of the stormwater and and also um just give it a natural palette that uh is is consistent with the area. The eighth slide. Uh, again, it's just a plan that starts to kind of quantify some of those materials and their locations. Again, uh going with street trees per uh city um recommendations. Uh, you start to see kind of the existing sidewalk, which is nine foot eight um along bomb. We're we're widening that to about an average of fourteen feet in depth to that uh knee wall that separates the private and public way. Um, and that's where you see some of these plantings and the recesses, uh some benching, uh bike racks and things of that nature. Uh nine, please. So this is uh the the vision for the project as a whole. Uh, phase one is on the right hand side and and phase two is here on the left. Uh, again, a a really important part was to provide a companion building, uh not a direct copy. So we took a lot of elements from phase one and and kind of re-envisioned them in phase two. So where phase one was a a masonry mass with um kind of a reductive uh essence where the metal panel was revealed. On phase two, the seven story mass is just that metal panel with the similar window repetition. So it's almost a an unsheathed uh version of phase one. And that was uh kind of in response to some of the community responses that were uh phase one could be a little dark at times. Uh, it's it's a massive building. It's got a large mass and dark in color, so we really wanted to brighten it up and um and and even out the the entire complex. Uh, also, uh, on the uh front facade there, the nine story or the seven story tower, we have a large glass vertical element that uh kind of signifies our entryway. It um, again, trying to bring some some very light and dynamic materials uh showing use and um movement within the building throughout the day and and night. The first floor, we're retreating very similar to phase one. So at the main entries, we have a hundred percent glass. And and that is surrounding our uh lobby, which would kind of mimic that uh commercial aspect. So um the plan for the lobby is to have a, you know, a a large area for tenants to be able to work and can uh congregate. Uh, to the left or the, yeah, to the left of that glazed tower there are uh the recesses for each uh residential unit. Um, as we spoke last time, uh the renderings were a bit outdated, and we have updated to show uh the full center of glass um that is there. Uh, we are trying to maintain some consistency in materials. So the first floor uh does reuse that black masonry that's on phase one. Um, and then which is slightly recessed from the uh silver metal panel face. And those silver metal panels come all the way to the ground on the um uh about a dozen columns or or so there on the face where the black brick and windows slightly recessed to kind of give a little bit of privacy uh to those residential units.
Jeremiah, as we mentioned before, could you describe for the board the skywalk that's connecting the buildings?
Yes, uh, so the intent, um, if budget permits, that we do have a sky uh bridge from phase uh two to phase one. Um, and that's the the dark metal panel uh clad element you see bridging uh the two buildings. Um, that is going to tie in the rooftop deck from phase one to phase two. Um, and then behind that, you do see the larger nine story mass that is uh a mix of masonry with uh glazed and cement board and metal panel infill.
But that walkway may not be in the final project. That's budget.
Correct, correct. Um, and and just below that too, on the first floor, we do have a uh a canopy that does connect the entrances from phase, the side entrance for phase one to the main entrance of phase two. So there is connectivity there as well.
And that will remain no matter what.
Correct. Uh, next slide. So uh, this is uh from the side guard setback um on the east side of the building. And again, this kind of shows a bomb boulevard will be on the right hand side. And as we work from uh right to left, there is that uh all glazed window wall system um that signifies the the um kind of the main entrance. And it has a ten degree uh turn to it that kind of relates back to the urban window, which is cut through phase one at ten degrees as well. So creating a little bit of dynamic uh interest along bomb boulevard. The uh white mass there is a silver uh metal panel that uh is is in the same uh patterning as phase one. Uh, the 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 slight recess there, the darker metal panel is just the connection from phase one or from the seven story tower to the nine stories tower. And then that nine story tower that um is along Dapper Way, uh predominantly masonry with uh uh larger uh glazed and metal panel, cement board and fill. Um, and and kind of as you see here too, the everything sits on that darker masonry plinth uh that's slightly recessed, similar to phase one, to kind of continue that same language uh along the pedestrian way. Um, next slide, please. Uh, this is a rear elevation now, so uh again, phase one is on the left hand side. On the right is phase two. Uh, this is where we we took uh some some notes of that larger masonry um scale, but also didn't want it to be so so massive. So uh we've we've broken it up a lot into kind of a reference of uh almost of an industrial building and then uh have broken up each opening into a different variety of uh cement board, metal panel and uh glazing glazed openings that relate to the units inside. And we do have a vertical strip as well that is um just just left of uh our loading zone and rear entrance as well. It ties into the interior um elevator core. Next slide. And this would be the elevation looking from uh phase one along that private drive that's proposed. Uh, as you can see on the first floor, a hundred percent glazing uh that looks on to the lobby and uh amenity spaces for phase one or for phase two. Um, and then again, from bomb on the left hand side working uh to Dapper is that uh large place um element that projects towards bomb. Um, got the a metal panel um clad uh a portion with the skybridge that is uh kind of an expression of that mass. And then the nine story uh masonry tower is along Dapper Way. Uh, the next slide, please. Thirteen. Uh, this is a an axon uh view that kind of indicates how how the the windows are kind of replicating on phase one. Um, again, we we tried to tie some of the create larger patterns of scale that would liken it to phase one as well. So on phase one, we have the urban window, and we had several windows that were tied into larger groupings. Again, not to make it too heavy or too massive, we started to play with the idea that we would tie these windows or vertical elements together with louvers that it's that span uh multiple stories. So each one of these louvers, the intent is it connects uh several panels that are um stacked where they align and that the shadows cast from them uh do create a similar aspect of how the the windows are grouped on phase one. You also get to see a little bit of uh along uh bomb boulevard, the the sidewalk area, this knee wall that we're speaking of, and then uh the residence uh uh private yard slash uh entrances to the to the lockout units.
While you're there, Jeremiah, uh, talk about the the glass, the transparencies on the residential.
Yeah, so we were uh or we had complied with um uh the percentages uh on the main entrances, uh it's a hundred percent, which uh uh is about forty percent of the total or uh yeah, about forty percent of total facade. And then on the uh residential portions of it, uh we have fifty percent of the um facade as glazed. So we we factored all together. We we are hitting that sixty or I'm sorry, we've got to factor out a seventy percent of the total length of bomb boulevard is transparent. Next slide. Uh, again, just another axon view that kind of indicates where we've got some of the levels. You'll see here that there's a small walkout deck on the second floor. Uh, one of the successes uh phase one is that we have multiple levels of exterior um access and and we're we're certainly uh pursuing that in phase two as well. Fifteenth slide, please. Just another uh axon view that's uh relating the the masonry uh nine story mass to the masonry um mass of phase one. Uh, again, it's it is elevated. We do have parking below. Um, that whole mass is elevated uh from the second story and above. And then below that that darker masonry is tucked back um to not be at at the property line. It it's meant to be very like open um and 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 have access for uh, you know, loading, parking, um, things of that nature. Sixteen slide, please. Uh, another axon view from further along bomb looking uh at phase two with phase one in the distance. Uh, this is where you kind of start to see those louvers, uh how they start to group the a larger scale on the on the bomb facade, as well as uh again, those recesses along the sidewalk uh to create this slight division between private and public way. It's uh that is there due to the deep recess or setback of of the the seven story mass. Next slide. Uh, more accents to illustrate this. This is a a great view that illustrates the connectivity with the skybridge. Um, is an uh extension of the the darker metal panel that frames the silver metal panel, how that extends over to um tie into the the darker um parapet at the same levels of phase one. Uh, and then at a ground level, uh the silver metal panel uh canopy that ties into the side entrance to phase one as well.
Jeremiah, again, in response to the comments made by the commission at the briefing, the detailing on the first floor, yes, uh highlights the the level of transparency.
Correct. Yeah, we we did update all of all the renderings now were updated from our last discussion and what we took into consideration to increase the transparency. Um, uh, we did add a few windows uh to up that percentage of transparency along Bell Boulevard and kind of reduce those uh massive planes of of dark masonry, which um was was a bit of a concern. And uh also, I believe one of the comments was to to make sure that those columns uh are expressed as a extension of the the silver metal panel. So those um, those columns you see there that are uh flush with the front face of the silver metal panels for the seven story mass um are all the same material within that brick and glass uh facade recessed about two feet back. Excellent. Uh, this was our our material palette. And again, we're borrowing a lot of the ideas from phase one and reinterpreting reinterpreting them in phase two. So uh again, the the bottom left is is an image of phase one with that silver metal panel and then the dark uh black masonry brick and dark bronze metal panel. On phase two, uh the seven story mass is um reinterpretation of just that silver metal panel with a dark bronze louver. Uh, to to kind of recreate those uh larger openings. Uh, and then for the larger masonry nine story mass, we're introducing a few new colors of brick, but then tying it in with um a little bit of an accent of that darker masonry. Uh, this this uh illustrated there in the top left hand corner. Excuse me. And um got uh, as I said, the the louvers, and we're just trying to create uh some texture through depth of either louvers and recesses um in our masonry mass, uh that central image there was inspiration for us to kind of create multiple levels of of recess uh from the brick. Columns reveals and where the windows were uh placed within relationship to the facade to create um depth and a little bit of dynamic um elements uh for the facade. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, these were a rendering from Street View that were in response to our C dot meeting. Um, again, these are illustrating that the the existing sidewalks, street trees are site wall uh that that makes up the difference of grade and to make it uh um accessible. And then those walkout units and how they're glazed um in relation to um the rest of the building. Excellent. This is in front of phase one, kind of walking towards phase two. Um, again, we really wanted to make a a little bit of a a more engaging statement as far as uh where the entrance is, how it's entered and how how it's viewed along this the street. So this is the displaced uh tower that you see here in in our forefront. That is our entry at ground level. It ties in with the the awning or the canopy that ties uh into the side entrance of phase uh one. And it's also going to, it also is the uh furthest uh element of of both the buildings that comes out almost to the property line. Um, so that way it kind of engages with the public way. And that was uh kind of to address the comments of, again, in phase one uh with the landscaping outboard and the sidewalk in border of the property line. Uh, there were, we did hear a few concerns or comments of, you know, you feel as though you're walking onto the building's property rather than the public way. So we, instead of creating that buffer uh as intended, we reversed it so that now we've got our main entrance that comes and meets the public way and then provides that setback with the landscaping and relief oh along the edge of of the sidewalk. and then provides that setback with the landscaping and relief along the edge of of the sidewalk. And slide 21 is our our overall view here from the intersection, a little clip of phase one there on the right. Again, that glass tower that we've been talking about and then the silver metal panel, seven-story mass with louvers and kind of emulating that window style and pattern that was on phase one. I'm going to go to the next slide, 22, and I'd like to have Joe from Gateway Engineering speak to Stormwater Management.
Joe, would you introduce yourself to the commission and spell your last name, please? Joe, your connection's bad, at least to us. It's, we have a hard time hearing you. That's still a problem, Joe. You're still breaking up. So why don't we keep moving? We'll try to come back to Joe.
Yeah, and he can, Bill, he can try to call in too. Oh, that's better, yep. Never mind.
Joe? You there?
Was better.
Was better.
You guys?
There you are.
Joe? Are you there? Hey, Joe, could you please call in? On the on the phone number?
Well, he's calling in. I can I can speak to
Yeah.
Slide 23, which is the next one, some of our sustainability goals. We are targeting the silver and and want to build off some of our sustainability practices that are, you know, reduction in in water usage. We are improving the energy performance through our mechanical system for for the building and each unit. We are our floor-to-ceiling windows, increasing daylight. We have a few skylights that are intended to bring light into the core of the building as well on the first floor. Again, our landscaping, we want to make sure it's a water efficient as possible and and local in in that regard as well. And some of those landscaped elements too will be continued on to the roof of the second level courtyard and then as well as the set the roof of the seven-story tower as well. And and I know that one of the items that certainly a lead point, but also just for the city, we do, we are complying with our dark sky initiative here as well, making sure that all lights are the appropriate degree and that everything is a downlight with no light trespass beyond the fixtures themselves. And I think last time too, Mike had mentioned that because it's grandly residential without the commercial elements to it, it does reduce the overall lighting. Like phase one, phase two doesn't have any planned architectural lighting, uplighting, any any accent lighting like that. We strongly believe that just the lights that are on from the building itself is going to create enough dynamic lighting through the course of its day and night. Joe was able to come back on now. We can hit 22.
I just keep going.
We go to slide 24. This is just our master plan, again, showing programmatically what we have, phase one, phase two. I think the important parts to hit on phase two is that we're continuing to use dapper way as our service entrances. We are utilizing the the existing parking garage entrance from phase one. We had the foresight to have a knockout in the underground level, so we'll be able to connect the garages, one-story underground. We do have a few parking spots, a long dapper and the private drive. On the first floor or first floor, we do have as you can see, it's programmed, a large lobby space that's kind of functioning as a multi-family or multi-use like social lounge slash your work from home, whatever it needs to be. Along with some some conference rooms and a large amenity space.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm going to interrupt and I say, I think that Joe has joined us on the phone. And Joe, you you have been promoted to be able to speak.
Yep, can everyone hear me out?
We hear you.
Why don't we just finish off with that thought?
Yeah.
In fact, I'd like you to go to get through that and then get to accessibility and then we'll go back to stormwater.
Okay. Yeah, so along some of the amenity spaces around phase one, indoor conditioned bike storage. We've got Laurel's, the the, I guess, the southwest corner of phase two will house Laurel's leasing office. So they have onsite presence that keeps kind of a watchful eye over dapper with loading, trash and things of that nature and also accessible from the private way that brings it down through from bomb. And then usually the about six units that do line bomb from that recess, which each one of those have a walkout. Be able to see that private front yard. But the public way. Next slide. Want to just storm now or just go through?
Yeah, I think if you could, if we could just go to before the accessibility and then we'll go back to Joe.
Okay. Slide 38. Yeah, possible to skip ahead to slide 38. So all of our units are type B. And then we do have our our typical mix to meet our percentage of type A for accessible units. And and these are just kind of some layouts and plans showing that the how our micros work are one bedrooms. So we have a two-bedroom that's accessible. That's a a build off of the the one bedroom. So we have two micros, two one-bedrooms and one two-bedroom. And we're laying these out as as a type A requirement with the accessibility accommodations. And they're dispersed throughout the building as well. So we have a few on the first floor and a few on seventh and one on the upper floor.
What about accessibility to the building itself?
To the building itself, we are accessible from the perimeter of the building. So we've got zero pressure or, you know, no obstructions. We do have a few grade accommodations, but we've got those all accommodated by ramps. So we can access the the project from dapper way or bomb Boulevard or the private drive to traverse from both the front or rear entrance.
So every one of those entrances is accessible.
Correct.
Joe, are you still with us?
Yes, I am.
Joe, would you introduce yourself and spell your last name for the record, please?
Joseph Galbraith, G A L B R A I T H.
Joe, you're the civil engineer for the project, is that correct?
Yes, correct. Pledge civil pardon.
Okay, if we could go to, I don't know if you can see it, hopefully you can, Joe, but it's slide 22, the stand stormwater management plan. If you could, you know, give an overview for the commission of what that stormwater management plan is.
Yep, I can see it. So we're, for this phase, we're disturbing approximately 0.6 acres for this second phase. And the way that we are managing the stormwater for this phase is a combination of green roofs. We're going to do some amended soils, rain gardens on the north side of the building. And then also some R tanks that were used in phase one. We're going to also use those in phase two. So that stormwater runoff will be conveyed from the roof either to those rain gardens or directly to the R tanks. And then that R tank will be outletted to dapper way with a connection to the PWSA storm sewers that exist today. So we're we're creating as much as we could, a treatment train for filling that water out by catching it on the roof and then conveying it through either the rain gardens or the R tanks.
And could you highlight some of the, you know, the percentages, the stormwater cals for the commission?
Yeah, so we are, being that we're under an acre, we do not have to do an NPDS permit for this. But we are capturing the one inch over all proposed impervious. So we are capturing that. And then we are also reducing the outflow rate for the two-year storm through the 100-year storm.
Joe, if you could stay with us, we're going to have some more questions, but we'd like to move on to transportation with Cindy Jampol. Cindy, are you there? And could you identify yourself with the commission, please?
Yes, this is Cindy Jampol. The last name is J A. M is in Mary, P is in Peter, O L E. I am president and CEO of Trans Associates and we are the transportation engineers for the project. Wherever my transportation slide is, that's where I'd like to be.
32, 32.
I think I had one before that, maybe.
Or you can go to 33.
Okay, there we go. I'll provide a brief transportation study, which has already been approved by the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure. This slide indicates the scope of the traffic study that was required by Domi for the project. The two green dots are the two ends of the site driveway, which is one way in the southbound direction from Bomb Boulevard down to dapper way. Then there are two signals along South Graham and unsignaled intersections at the two ends of dapper way. Next slide, please. Okay, we did the calculations per the zoning code for parking and also bicycle spaces. As shown in this slide, a minimum of 142 automobile spaces are required. 149 are provided on the site. And as has been previously described, they are connected to the garage that exists under phase one and will share the driveway for the phase one building. Additionally, 58 bicycle spaces are required. We are providing 61 bicycle spaces, 51 of which will be in an enclosed bike room and at least 10 will be outdoors in bicycle racks of an approved type. Next slide, please. Loading calculations indicated a requirement for two loading spaces. Those two loading spaces are present and they are accessed off of dapper way. And we've seen several slides of that already. We're using dapper way as a true way that provides service to both loading and parking for the building. Next slide, please. This is, this busy little slide is the traffic improvements. We did the analysis, determined no adverse impacts. And basically, these improvements indicate how to control that private driveway that I previously mentioned. The driveway will be a right turn in from Bomb Boulevard, continuing south to dapper way, at which point one could turn left or right. There's a stop control there. There's a stop control coming out of the garage driveway that's located in building one. And also no left turn sign on dapper way. So no one tries to go up the driveway in the wrong direction. That is the sum total of the traffic improvements. Next slide, please. We also developed a transportation demand management plan. There was already one in place for phase one. There are many things here. I'll try to avoid reading all the words, but a TDM coordinator will be the resource person for all of the multimodal options that are available for the tenants of this building. As I had mentioned, there'll be a controlled access bike room with a workbench and some basic tools and air to make operating a bicycle easier. The project will provide outdoor public bike racks. The developer is going to meet with Healthy Ride to see if perhaps an additional Healthy Ride station might be an enhancement. Parking will be unbundled from apartment rentals. That is, you have to pay extra if you want to have a parking space, but you don't have to have one. Additionally, an information kiosk for the building lobby would be explored, which would provide real-time information for multimodal options near the building. Also at the reception desk, leaflets on multimodal options for those who still read paper things so that they can see what their options are in the building. They'll provide a follow-up to TDM strategies on a schedule to be determined by Domi. Also, there will be a pickup and drop-off point on the new site driveway, which was shown in previous graphics. Okay, also, some people who live in the building may be eligible for shuttle service from their employer employer or their school to get them back and forth so they don't need to operate an automobile. And they can also have an area in the lobby where tenants can try to meet up for forming car pools or other types of joint transportation. That is the brief summary of the transportation study.
And Cindy, with respect to construction management, that plan still would be, need to be finalized and approved, is that correct?
That's, that's correct. That would be under development and will be subject to submission to Domi and working with them to obtain their approval of how that will all be managed.
That's the end of our presentation. So prepared to answer any question or provide any information as desired by the commission.
Okay, great. Thank you so very much for that presentation. At this time, we open the floor for public testimony. Is there, does it look like there are any hands out there raised?
There are. There are, yes. Hold on just one moment, Lenore Williams. I will promote you to to speak.
Thank you.
You can unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Thank you. My name is Lenore, L E N O R E. Last Lenore, you've been muted by accident. We can't hear you. Initiative and authorized to speak. We appreciate the presentation that was made today. It's one of many that we have received from Michael and we are very appreciative of all the efforts that he has taken to make sure that he is working with the community groups in conjunction with the letter of agreement that also took place with the nearby residents and neighbors. So thank you for that. Though we would, by our bomb center plan, would have loved to have seen first floor retail. We appreciate the fact that it was pushed back at this point. We do hope that possibly, if things do turn around, that some of that first floor can be opened up to a lift workspace. We are happy about the stormwater management system that is going into place and looking forward to the landscaping as well. And also, though we were kind of late to the table, and though we have asked about some considerations, we are still looking towards the possibility of the inclusionary and affordable housing allotments that can still take place. In regards to the skywalk that's being proposed, some discussion did take place on that. And though we like the first floor activation the most, we would really like to see the the skywalk not take place just in terms of activating the first floor access around the building so that it is more visible and walkable for the community. And that's it. I appreciate your time.
Thank you for your testimony.
Sean Heron, can you please spell your name and you can unmute yourself?
Uh huh. Sean Heron, S E A N, last name H A R A N. I live in North Oakland. I just wanted to say that I think this is a really nice project. I think it's a good way to increase housing availability in the city and the area. And I just wanted to, I think it looks nice. I just wanted to urge the council to approve it. And that's all I had to say.
Thank you for your testimony.
There are no further hands at this moment.
Okay, well, thank you for those that have given testimony. At this time, commissioners, are there any questions and or comments? If there are none, do we have a motion to approve what the standard conditions as stated in our reports?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Blackwell. Do we have a second from the floor?
Second.
Commissioner O'Neill, appreciate you. Okay, Commissioner Askey?
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton Falk?
Aye.
Commissioner Dietrich?
Aye.
Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Commissioner Mingo?
Aye.
Welcome, thank you. And Commissioner O'Neill?
Aye.
Fantastic. So motion carries, passes, and thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
Thanks for your time and consideration.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome. Have a great day. So moving on, that is the last of the items under hearing and action. Now we will move on to Agenda Item D, Plan of Lots. Mr. Shepke is going to present those. Mr. Shepke, shall I run through, and are we going to take these in two parts?
We can take them all in one batch this afternoon.
Okay, very good. So then I can run through, and then you can take it away. Under Plan of Lots, we have seven items. Item number one, DCP dash lot dash twenty-twenty-two dash zero-zero-five-five-three, Mayflower Street Minor Consolidation, Larmor. Item two, DCP dash lot dash twenty-twenty-two dash zero-zero-five-one-eight, Spring Garden Avenue Minor Consolidation, Spring Garden. Item number three, DCP dash lot dash twenty-twenty-two dash zero-zero-five-zero-seven, Sussman Street Minor Consolidation, East Allegheny. Item number four, DCP dash lot dash twenty-twenty-two dash zero-zero-five-four-nine, Duffield Street Minor Subdivision, Stanton Heights. Item number five, DCP dash lot twenty-twenty-two dash zero-zero-five-two-two, Shenley Center, Major Subdivision Two, Upper Hill. Item six, DCP dash lot dash twenty-twenty-two dash zero-zero-four-five-six, at nine-thirty-nine, West North Avenue, Major Subdivision Two, Allegheny West. Item number seven, and final, under Plan of Lots, DCP dash lot dash twenty-twenty-two dash zero-zero-four-seven-zero, University of Pittsburgh, Major Consolidation Two, North Oakland. Mr. Shepke?
Thank you. The first item is the Mayflower Street consolidation. This is the consolidation of three parcels into two parcels. The proposed lot one would have thirty-six feet of frontage on Mayflower Street, would be three thousand six hundred and two square feet in area. And the proposed lot two would have thirty-six feet of frontage on Mayflower Street, would be three thousand six hundred and two square feet in area. The proposed, or the subject property is currently vacant, and the proposed motion is to approve the Mayflower Street consolidation. The next item is the print, the Spring Garden Avenue consolidation. This is the consolidation of two parcels into one parcel. The proposed lot would have frontage on Spring Garden Avenue and be five thousand one hundred and fourteen square feet in area. A house is located on the subject property, and the recommended motion is to approve the Spring Garden Avenue consolidation. The next item is the Suesmon Street consolidation. This is the consolidation of two parcels into one parcel. The proposed lot would have frontage on Suesmon Street, would be two thousand five hundred and seventy-two square feet in area. A house is located on the subject property, and the recommended motion is to approve the Suesmon Street consolidation. The next item is the Duffield Street subdivision. This is the subdivision of one parcel into seven parcels. The proposed lots would have frontage on Duffield Street and lot sizes ranging from three thousand seventeen square feet to three thousand four hundred and fifty-eight square feet in area. The, it would also create a remainder lot, which would have frontage on Stanton Avenue, would be fourteen thousand fifty-seven square feet in area. The subject property is currently vacant, and the recommended motion is to approve the Duffield Street subdivision. The next item is the Shenley Center subdivision. This is the subdivision of one parcel into two parcels. The proposed lot one A would have four hundred and thirty feet of frontage on Bigelow Boulevard. It would be a hundred and forty-six thousand one hundred and thirty-nine square feet in area. The proposed lot one B would have a hundred and seventy-one feet of frontage on Bigelow Boulevard, it would be twenty-nine thousand one hundred and seventy-three square feet in area. A, an eight-story assisted living facility and a thirteen-story hotel are located on the subject property. And this is a major subdivision, which was first reviewed by the planning commission on April nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two. The recommended motion is to approve the Shenley Center subdivision. The next item is the West North Avenue subdivision. This is the subdivision of two parcels into seventeen parcels. All of the proposed lots would have frontage on West North Avenue and would have lot sizes ranging from two thousand square feet to two thousand three hundred and seventeen square feet in area. A one-story building is located on the subject property that is currently used for the warehouse and office for a print shop, which is to be demolished. The recommended, this is a major subdivision, which was first reviewed by the planning commission on April nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two. And the recommended motion is to approve the nine-three-nine West North Avenue subdivision. And the last item on Plan of Lots is the University of Pittsburgh consolidation. This is the consolidation of four parcels into three parcels. Parcel one, subpart A, would have one thousand thirty-eight feet of frontage on O'Hara Street, would be one million three hundred and twenty thousand two hundred and fifty-five square feet in area. Parcel one, subpart B, would have three hundred and forty feet of frontage on DeRozan Street, would be one hundred and forty-six thousand sixty-five square feet in area. Those, parcel two would have three hundred and five feet of frontage on Parkman Avenue, and be a hundred and twenty-five thousand eight hundred and thirty-six square feet in area. Several buildings that are part of the University of Pittsburgh campus are located on the subject property. This is a major subdivision, which was first reviewed by the planning commission on May, on April nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two. And the recommended motion is to approve the University of Pittsburgh consolidation. And that's it for Plan of Lots. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Shepke. At this time, do we have any public testimony as it relates through Agenda Item D, Plan of Lots, numbers one through seven?
There are no hands raised.
Thank you very much. At this time, do we have a motion from the floor to approve? All right, Commissioner Dick, motion?
I have a question, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I apologize. Whereabout, with reference to the Shenley lot of consolidations on, whereabouts along Bigelow Boulevard, is that located? You said there's a major hotel on it, is that?
Yeah, one moment while I bring it up on a map.
I'm sorry.
My reference. It's located kind of near the, one second, my map is still, okay. Thanks, yes, somebody's bringing it up on Google Maps right now. They're going quicker than me. Yeah, there it is. It's located just across the borders separating Oakland from what neighborhood is this in? The, I believe it's in the Hill District. It's the location of a, kind of, sorry.
It's the former residence-
Shenley Gardens?
Former residence, yeah.
And Inception Assisted Living.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm sorry to hold up you-
Okay, so, given Commissioner Dick said that wasn't a motion for approval, do I have a motion from, from the commission?
Yes. I'll give you that.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Dick. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Askey. Commissioner Askey?
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton Falk?
Aye.
Commissioner Dietrich?
Aye.
Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Commissioner Mingo?
Aye.
Excellent. And Commissioner O'Neill?
Obstand.
Okay, great. So motion carries, they pass. Moving on to the next agenda item is Agenda Item E under Director's Report, and I do understand that there is a Director's Report today, a small one. So I think Ms. Kramer, will you be taking that?
I can, but I think that Kate was, was-
Yeah, my apologies that we don't have a director here, but I will make do. We just wanted to introduce John Roth, who's a new staff person in our department. John, if you want to turn the camera on, if you can. He is our new Special Projects Operation Manager, which is a fancy word for working on our permitting system and doing all of the glamorous things that help us run day-to-day and graphic design and all the sort of stuff that we need to do our jobs. So he is most recently from Millvale Planning and Zoning. So we are excited to have him. This is his first become a job, second become a job.
Second, so.
Yep. Great. So just want to introduce him to the team.
Well, welcome, Mr. Roth. Thank you for helping the rest of the team do what they do.
Thank you. Happy to be here, so.
Which helps the commission do what we do. It's great.
Welcome. Yes, welcome.
Thank you.
Fabulous. Well, with that, I guess that concludes today's meeting, correct?
I should take it.
Yes, another commission meeting down. So commissioners, thank you so very much for sharing today. Staff, thank you for having us prepared. I think that's it. Good and beautiful people, we can sign off. Meeting adjourned?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you, thank you.